Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your night to join us for this public hearing. This is a public hearing for an Eagle permit application for Jeff Burrell, Target Trucking. The project is in Grass Lake Township, Jackson County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division, and I'm just going to be the moderator for the hearing tonight. But before we get started, just have a couple of things to go through. One is our agenda. This is what it's going to look like for tonight. We're going to start off with the introduction, which I'm doing right now. A thing to keep in mind is that there's going to be actually two parts to tonight's hearing. We're going to start off with an informational session. So the applicant or the applicant's representative is going to have an opportunity to talk about the project for about 10 or 15 minutes, and then we'll have a little bit of a Q and A session afterwards until about 6:30 to make sure we have enough time for everybody's statements during the hearing part, which will be the part after that. So the second part will be that official hearing where everybody will have a chance to make a statement for the record on this application. And so everyone will have that chance, and then we'll talk about where to find other information and who to contact for further questions. And we'll go through how we're going to run everything with Zoom here in a little bit. But for now, all lines are going to be muted. So these are kind of logistical items. So you'll be able to hear us, but we won't be able to hear you until you're unmuted for the Q and A session or for the hearing, which again, we'll talk about later. But you can submit questions anytime using the Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar. We'll try to answer those with as much time as we have after the informational session or during the informational session. And then, just so you're aware, we are recording this hearing. This will be on our YouTube channel in a couple of days so that you'd be have an opportunity to be able to watch it again if you like. All right, at this point, I'd like to invite our other Eagle staff to turn their cameras on and introduce themselves.
I can go first. Hi, my name is Maddie Orler, and I am the hearings officer from the Jackson District Office and the environmental quality analyst reviewing this application.
And I'm Jeff Pierce. I'm the district supervisor for the Lansing and Jackson district offices for the Water Resources Unit.
Hey, everyone. My name is Kate Kirkpatrick. I am in the Wetland License and Streams Unit out of Lansing as a wetlands policy analyst.
Hi, I'm Lena Pappas. I'm the Senior Geologist for the Water Use Assessment Unit.
All right. Thank you all for joining us tonight for the hearing. Oops. At this time, do you have a few words you wanted to say about the application before we start with the applicant's presentation, Maddie?
Yeah, so I can give a brief introduction of the project before the applicant presents. So this proposed project has two components, which includes the after the fact permit application to increase the size of the existing pond to a 10 acre lake for the purpose of commercial sand and gravel mining. And then the applicant is also proposing to excavate the existing 10 acre lake to expand it to approximately 33 acres in size via hydraulic dredging.
Perfect. Thanks, Maddie. And so at this time, we're going to unmute the representatives for the applicant, Jerry Sosnowski and Mark Swetman. We are going to find you in the audience. It looks like Jerry is unmuted. And is Mark? Okay, and Mark's unmuted. Are you there, Mark?
I am here.
All right. Perfect. Are you there, Jerry? Jerry, it looks like you're unmuted on our end, but you do have, it looks like you have, there you go.
Okay, I'm here.
All right. Okay, perfect. I have your slides here. I'll advance them for you. Just let me know when to move on to the next slide. Please keep it to about 15, the presentation to about 15 minutes maximum so that we have enough time to go through some questions here at the end. Thank you.
Okay, so there's four slides, I believe. You can put them up. Okay, this one is from 2000, year 2000. Air photo from Jackson County showing what the property looked like in the year 2000. If you'd move to the next one. This was in 2008, and this is, well, 2007, actually. This was a year before Target Trucking took over ownership of the property. And as you can see on the west end, there's some mining going on, and that's was started by farmers' zens who owned all the property around here. Next slide, please. This is his current satellite image as there is available online. Are we still connected?
Yep, looks like it. Are you there, Jerry?
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, it was a problem at my end. So what this image is showing is at the extreme west end where that work was where the mine was opened up back in 2007, that's where the wash plant is. And then you can see the extent of that 10 acre lake. And then if there's another slide. This is a National Wetland Inventory map, and it shows where the wetlands are. And if you overlay all these photos that I'm talking through, those wetlands remain the same as what the National Wetland Inventory shows. So we haven't changed a thing with those wetlands. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Swetman to talk about hydro geo study. We haven't affected the boundaries of any wetlands, and Mark's going to talk about groundwater.
Yeah, let me just give, go to the next slide, please. Okay, that's not one of the slides that I put in there, but that's fine. Let me just give a quick background of myself. So I'm a practicing hydro geologist, certified professional geologist, and I've been doing this kind of work for about 40 years. And so the map that's up in front of you shows some of the monitoring locations that were put in as part of the hydrogeologic evaluation, varying monitoring wells and surface water monitoring locations. Not only onsite, but offsite, there were a whole batch of offsite elevations taken at the ditch and creeks and streams that run through the area. Kill the move, move on to the next slide, please. Okay, so next slide, please. All right, so in April of 2021, we completed our hydrogeologic work and submitted that into Eagle for their review and comment. And if you look in the the public record that's online now, I think that initial report comes up on page 66 of the public record. And that investigation was done, as is the revised one that was done, were all done according to the guidelines that Eagle has for doing hydrogeologic studies at sand and gravel quarries. So there were some comments that came back and primarily with the modeling activity that was done and trying to predict what effect, if any, there could be on the current lake and the expansion. And so we went through and undertook really intense modeling effort and revise the modeling section of the report. And so this slide just goes through and outlines the things that we did to update the report. And there's some acronyms in here that I just want to spend a few minutes to tell you what they are. So the first bullet says revise CHB, so those are what are called constant head boundaries. And so revise those, in particular on the one side of the site where we had a constant head boundary in before, but just change it to a drain, so it behaved as it actually is now. We also converted some of the boundaries in the rivers to basically high permeability grid cells. Again, to the depth of the features that we knew. The next bullet talks about, we went through and did some things with recharge to specifically account for ET, which is called evapotranspiration. And one of the main things that happens when you expose the groundwater is part of the mining operation, and you've got to account for the evaporative transfer transpiration changes that occurred. And then we went through and did recalibration and developed the proposed model with the enlarged lake and predicted the water level and water balance changes. And then one of the other big components of modeling is looking at the sensitivity of the input parameters that you've put in to make sure that they're kind of matching up with what's known in the area. Before we get into the slides, the other part when we all need to understand is that the mining operation that Target Trucking is doing, so going down to the water table, they use what's called dry mining activities. So it's just basically excavation and take the soils out, do the sifting of them, and then ship the soils offsite for various residential and commercial uses. There's two methods to go below the water table, and this is where I think a lot of confusion comes up. Target Trucking is using a wet method, a hydraulic method, where they're using hydraulic dredges to basically suck the sand out from below the water table and keeping the lake in place. There are some other mining operations where they want to continue in dry operations, and so they dewater it, and they draw the groundwater down to the depth that they're mining, so they're mining in a dry environment. That is not the case here. And because of that, that mining technique, the impacts to the surrounding area are significantly reduced, if not, if not all removed completely. So next slide, please. Okay, so this basically shows where we made some alterations, and this is where the drain that runs along the west side of the property before it was a constant head boundary, that was revised to basically a drain boundary. And those elevations on there are actual drain elevations. So we went along and had staff gauges along the drains and took actually ground surface elevations and water surface elevations, and then use that as part of the modeling. If you look way up on the far top of the outline or the map here, there's a thing that's called culvert five. And so we actually were taking water levels all the way offsite, several miles away from the site again to kind of calibrate everything. Next slide, please. This is what the computer sees, and so we look at the lithology of the site based on onsite known information. And then also did a whole batch of looking at regional water well records, identified where generally the bedrock surfaces, the clay underneath, underlying all the sand and gravel on site, some areas of low K that are on there that are basically low permeability, and that came from area well logs. And they'll show on the maps that are in the hydro geo study. Next slide, please. So you put all that into the computer, and we go through and say, okay, we're going to enlarge the lake. And so the, kind of the oblong red circle, semicircle on the east side of the site is really that offsite pond that's on the other side of the road. And the values that we have on here are the, some of the input parameters going into the model. And for those that are model aficionados, all the detail about what those are and how they came about are again in the report, in the revised hydro report, which by the way, that revised hydro report was issued by us on January 18th in 2023. And in the public record, it's on, starts on page 354. So if you want to look at the most recent version of the report, I would suggest you go to page 354. And really, the only revisions again in that report that were made were to the modeling section. And that text starts on, in the public record on page 371. Calibrations are on page 606. If you just want to get there, it's a big public record, so it takes a minute to get exactly where you want to be. Next page, please. So we put all that stuff in, and we say, okay, what are the regional groundwater levels? And then what are the changes that could occur? When you, in this case, expose the water, the groundwater to the air? And the changes are minimal. You know, this is, you could call it almost a heat map if you wanted, where blue is actually a slight increase in water levels, and the red and yellow are some lower water levels that occurred. Next slide, please. Zooms a little bit more. So again, zooming in on the site, so what we saw, and again, this is kind of typical for these type of operations, you see a slight increase in the water table elevation immediately down gradient of the site, you know, more waters going in and exiting through the pond out into the aquifer. So the aquifer responds, and it comes up a little bit. In this case, right at the edge of the property, it's like about a foot or half a foot, so not a lot. Then importantly, we look at the upgrading side, and what could the potential impact be to the water level in the unconfined aquifer on the upgrading side? And that rise on the upgrading side, again, which is typical for these type of operations, changed by about a foot. And actually, it's really pretty much limited to the site on that southeast corner where the changes would occur. Offsite changes to the pond off to the east are less than a tenth of a foot. Again, very minimal changes and really no changes to water wells in the area. I think that's the last slide. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Yeah, thank, thank you both for providing that information on the project. At this time, I'd like to invite our panelists to turn their cameras on. We're going to explain how we're going to do this Q and A session here. So there's a couple of different ways that you can ask a question. You can type your question in the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen, just type, type that into us. And I'll be moderating those, and then click, or you can click your hand icon through bottom of your screen. What that will do will raise your hand and zoom, and then I can call on you, and you can ask your question yourself. Looks like we do have a couple of phone-in callers. So for the phone-in callers, if you wanted to ask a question, just type pound two on your receiver. That will raise your hand and zoom, and we'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. Only other thing before we get started, I wanted to make sure you're aware that this is the Q and A session. So this is the part where you'll have an opportunity to ask a question. If you have a statement that you want to make based on this project and application, we're going to do that here in a little bit, and I'll tell you how we're going to do that once the Q and A session is over. So you'll want to save those comments at that time. All right. So with that, do we have any questions in the audience? And we're going to try to go, I will go as late as about 6:30 to make sure we have enough time for everybody's comments tonight. So does anybody have a question for our panel here? And give it a couple of seconds. All right. So one question was directed at Mark, just asking who Mark works for. And I guess I don't know, I'm assuming that means the company.
Yeah, I work for WSP. It was wood when we did the first version of the first version of the report, and the company changed to WSP. It's a multinational company.
Yeah, thanks for that question and for that answer. So the question that came in, the study that was just referenced, does it give info regarding the impact to the current lake or the proposed expansion? So I don't know if that's something you can comment on, Maddie, or you want to direct to someone else?
I think Lena can probably answer that more since she's reviewed the hydro geo more thoroughly.
Yep. So the study that was just mentioned directly applies to the expansion of the lake. We actually were able to use onsite data, so real data to actually compare to previous, you know, pre-mining groundwater elevations that have been collected, and then we were able to compare that to the lake levels that were there. So.
All right. Thank you both. All right. Next question is related to wells. I'm assuming they're drinking water wells at their residence. Who will pay for our wells if they go dry? And they said recently 11 wells went dry recently at the Vella gravel pit in Ann Arbor. I don't know if there's anything related to water withdrawal, or can anybody help answer any of that?
I'll just, I'll add something on that, Ryan. And I brought that up earlier in my presentation. So the operation that's going on over in Ann Arbor is a dewatering operation, and they're pumping millions of gallons a day out of that aquifer. Target Trucking is not pumping water and discharging it offsite and taking it out of the system. So that's from a hydro geo standpoint what's going on.
And then I can, oh, go ahead. I was just going to say I can speak on Eagle's side a bit more about that. So if we do determine that a permit can be issued, the installation of monitoring wells on the property is oftentimes a requirement for types of projects like this. So then we can continue to evaluate if adverse impacts are occurring, and then we can reevaluate from there if we do see impacts occurring.
Thank you both. Next question, has Eagle reviewed slash approved the current hydro study?
Yep. So we did have a chance to work with Mark and Jerry in regards to the revised model and the new hydro geo that was submitted, and we had a chance to kind of go through it. We approve it in that we inform permit staff that it's a reliably constructed study, and we didn't see anything that would be out of the ordinary. So I mean, insofar as we say that it seems like a reliable model, then yes, we did approve it.
And Lena, that report was issued on March 29th, I recall.
Yep, I could try to find the exact date for you if you'd like. Actually, it looks like it was revised on January 18th, 2023, but we probably did receive it in March, right?
No, but your last memo from the model was March 29th of 23.
Oh, my memo. Sorry. Yep.
Yes, yours. Your memo. Yeah, our report was January 18th of 23, and you were 3/29/23.
Yep.
Thanks.
Let me just add real quick to that, second part of that question. We are still in the process, Eagle is still in the process of reviewing the hydro geo, like through a critical review. What Lena refers to is just mostly a determination to get a acceptable model to us in the first place. We're still in the process of reviewing it. We haven't made any conclusions as to the conclusions that the model has made within it. So that, that will be incorporated into our, our review and determination on a permit once, once that review is complete.
Thanks for that addition, Jeff. Another question. It looks like there's a couple on here specifically, again, related to potential damage costs. What is the specific process a resident should follow if there is damage to their property? Pond, well, et cetera.
And then I'm going to Kind of answer that.
Yeah.
So Eagle does have a groundwater dispute resolution program through our water use program. A first step in that would be submitting, you know, a complaint to our groundwater dispute water use program. And they would follow up with that. Part of this would be likely falling under a civil matter that you would also have to approach if damages occur to your property. That would be a civil matter, but we do have a program in place to work with property owners who may have been damaged through like groundwater withdrawal that, that you would go through, through our water use program. And, and we can provide links to that if needed.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I'm going to tack on. So I think you addressed the question about if a property is damaged and wells go dry. There's a second part to one of the, one of the questions related to that, and why is it not accounted for on Target Trucking site plan? I'm assuming submitted as part of the application process. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm getting this confused. There's a second part, there's no accounting for the second and third lake created during mining. The second lake appears to be more than five acres. Why is this not accounted for in Target Trucking site plan? Okay, so there was two questions.
I can speak a bit for the second lake. So we have been on site and confirmed that there is not a, an actual second lake. And that area in question is a settling pond that is created during the excavation when they are mining the materials and processing the material. The water from the settling pond is then recycled back into the lake. It does look larger during operation due to this lower infiltration rate. But no excavation has occurred that would require a permit from us. If they did excavate it in the future, then obviously it would require a permit. But for right now, they have not done anything to require a permit for the second lake because it's a settling pond.
Okay, thanks, Maddie. There's a question about what Mark's credentials were again. And then when did you start being a consultant? And if you attended the Grass Lake Township meeting? I don't know if you want to expand on what your role is, Mark, at all. That's
And so there's, they're really. So I was the project director on this. The modeling was done by one of our PhD modelers. And he is actually on family medical leave, so he couldn't be here today. And so my credentials, I've been doing hydro geo work, I said earlier, for about 40 years. And done multiple sand and gravel operations and mining operations and pond creations in Michigan.
Yeah, thanks for that addition, Mark. Is there any possibility of contaminating the water table with chemicals from the mining process? I don't know if anyone can speak on if the chemicals are used or how that works?
I can begin to talk about that. So we specifically review the projects for impacts to wetlands, lakes and streams. So water quality isn't quite what we're reviewing the project for. But for the brine and water quality concerns, we are aware of them, and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has been notified of these concerns as well as Eagles groundwater and water quality staff. I know there's a ground, separate groundwater permit, so they're aware of it, and I think that is more part of their review rather than ours specifically relating to the wetlands, lakes and streams.
Okay, thanks for that. Yeah, thanks, Maddie, for that information. Will the hydro study be approved before determination of the lake expansion, lake, lake expansion?
So I can talk about that, too. So the hydro geo study was a requirement for our permit application. So Lena reviewed that for completeness and did her own review of their hydro geo document. And that will be used to help us ultimately make our permitting decision. So the hydro geo review comes first, and then it helps us create our permitting decision then.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks. I think that helps, Maddie. Is there an example, a diagram of how the expansion of the existing, of how the expansion of the existing 10 acre lake?
Something that I can think of is the site plans. Those are on my Enviro that will show what's being proposed. So the expansion of the 10 acre lake to the 33 acres that will help show what the scope is really what they're proposing.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Maddie. And just so everybody knows, I will be, will be providing a link to my Enviro a little bit later on when we talk about ways to make a comment. Another question. So this question is, what stops 35 acres from becoming 70? As did the five become nine? So this might be related to the permitting process and what requires a permit. I don't know, Maddie, if you want to talk about that a little bit more.
So this process started with the compliance portion, so the after the fact permit application for the original expansion. So I think going through the violation notice process after the fact, and now being aware of the permit process. being aware of the permit process and so any subsequent expansion of the lake would require a permit from us.
All right, thanks, Maddie. Um, there's a couple of other questions for Mark. I know you've already talked about this a little bit and so related to, Mark, do you work for Target Trucking LLC? And then what year you start, you started consulting for Target? I know you've talked about your background a little bit. Do you want to, are you able to answer these those clarifying questions?
I don't quite understand the question, but yes, I'm a hydro geologist and I'm a consultant that works for WSB. So Target Trucking needed to have a hydro geo study. They looked at our qualifications and they hired us. But I don't have any interest, financial interest in Target Trucking if that's what somebody's trying to allege.
All right, yeah, thanks for that clarification, Mark. Right, so we're getting close to time here. Um, so this is gonna be the last question. Uh, is, and so there's quite a bit to this. This is for Eagle. It says, as far as we know, Target Truck, Trucking accidentally dug the current ten acre lake. Uh, according to Jerry at the planning commission meeting last month, the excavator operator accidentally dug too deep and repeatedly maintained it was less than five acres until a neighbor flew drones over and saw events of a ten acre lake. Only then did the study occur. Can Eagle confirm this? I guess they're looking for confirmation on if that's how it went, went about.
Yeah, I think Kate may be able to answer that better, more related to the history of the, the site, I guess.
Sure, I'll try to remember because it's been twenty nineteen was when I first went out on site. So we did receive a complaint. Um, with, with the aerial imagery, we met with a couple of people in our office on, on the lake expansion. Um, they, Target Trucking had not done an evaluation of the size of the lake or anything like that. So I went out there with the GPS unit and that's when we determined that it was over five acres. Um, a little less than ten acres and, and needed a permit. So I can't speak to whether they knew or not that they, what they were doing, but that was that, those were the events as they unfolded on my end.
Okay, thanks. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, thanks very much, Kate, for that information. Right. Um, yeah, so we're, are at the time where we need to move on uh with the hearing part today. Uh, but I think we at least touched on the other remaining questions in here. Uh, I will provide Maddie's contact information uh at the end of this so that you can contact her if you have additional questions as well as what was typed in the Q and A box for potential follow-up. So just to let you know uh about that. And now, oops. We're gonna move on to uh other ways to submit an official comment before we kind of get to the hearing part. Or you'll be able to make your statement for the record on this project. Um, so the other ways to submit an official comment, if you didn't want to make a statement tonight, you can provide your comments directly into the mine viro by accessing the public hearing event or submission HPEW four TB BR three seven four. The link is there. We'll put that in the chat. Um, and that is a link to my Enviro. It will, that, that link will not take you to the documents to search, but will take you to the application uh for my Enviro. Um, so you should be able to uh navigate from there. Uh, and you can also send in comments by mail to Maddie Orler, O R L E R, Eagle Water Resources Division, Jackson District Office, three zero one East Lewis Glick Highway, Jackson, Michigan, four nine two zero one. The comment period after this public hearing will be open for ten days, which is October twenty-sixth. So you can submit comments by one of these other ways uh over the next ten days if you have something to add or didn't want to make a comment tonight during the hearing part. All right, so at this time, we're gonna kick off the hearing. So Maddie, I would like to invite you to read the opening statement for tonight.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Maddie Orler and I am the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle's submission number HPEW four TB BR three seven four. With me tonight is Jeff Pierce, Lansing and Jackson District Offices Water Resources Division Supervisor, Kate Kirkpatrick, Wetlands Policy Analyst and Lena Papas, Senior Geologist. To describe how this is going to work, I will begin with some background information about why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments and we will spend the majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes and the great lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing these responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four PA four fifty-one as amended, also known as Act four fifty-one. We are here tonight because Jeff Perel, Target Trucking, has proposed the following. The after the fact permit application for the excavation of approximately one hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-seven cubic yards to increase the size of an existing pond to a ten acre lake for the purpose of commercial sand and gravel mining. The applicant is also proposing to excavate the existing ten acre lake to expand it to approximately thirty-three acres in size via hydraulic dredging. This expansion is proposed to permanently impact approximately zero point seven eight acres of scrub shrub wetland. The purchase of wetland bank credits is being proposed as wetland mitigation. The annual amount of excavation proposed is estimated to be approximately one hundred ninety-nine thousand and twenty-five cubic yards of material or approximately two point eight five acres. For the purpose of the public hearing, in order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Port, Part three oh one Inland Lakes and Streams and Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the regulated resources on site. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of Part three oh one of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by section three oh one oh six of Part three oh one. The department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. In passing upon an application, the department shall consider the possible effects of the proposed action upon the inland lake or stream and upon waters from which or into which its waters flow and the uses of all such waters, including uses for recreation, fishing wildlife, aesthetics, local government, agriculture, commerce and industry. The department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. This part does not modify the rights and responsibilities of any riparian owner to the use of his or her riparian water. A permit shall specify that a project completed in accordance with this part shall not cause unlawful pollution as defined by Part thirty-one. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in Jeff Perel, Target Trucking, an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making a decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Jackson Citizen Patriot in the Saturday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three edition. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant and their consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on all those that raised their hand in their Zoom toolbar that they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via my Enviro portal, email or US mail. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your micro, microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given four minutes to make their comments. We will include, indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Enviro portal website and searching for the application number HPEW four TB BR three seven four. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
All right, many thanks, Maddie. Uh, I guess just to add a couple of quick things, uh, everyone will have an opportunity to make a comment tonight. It'll be one comment per individual. Um, and then, but if you have, if you're on the line making a comment and you have somebody else uh on the line who also wants to make a comment, when it's your turn, just let me know and we'll let them make their comments as well. As Maddie had mentioned, uh, people during, who indicated during registration that they wanted to make a comment, we'll start first. I have a list of six names. Uh, after we get those through those six names, then you can raise your hand in Zoom and we'll call on people in turn if you haven't made a comment. And if you're on the phone, uh, just select pound two on your receiver to raise your hand in Zoom. And again, we'll call on you when it's your turn to make a comment. Uh, everyone will have four minutes like Maddie had mentioned. I'll give you one minute heads up when you're getting close to time. And please identify your name and, and affiliation if you have one. And we're gonna go ahead and get started. So first off on my list, and I'm gonna uh identify the first person followed by who's next, just so you know, if you're coming up. Um, Star Crowdes is the first person on my list and then Michael Wil, Wilzinky, Wilsinky. So Star, we're going to unmute you. It looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself uh on your end using the microphone uh button and you can begin when you're ready. Are you there, Star?
I'm here.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we can hear you. You can begin when you're ready.
Well, what I would like to say, and I want to thank you all for this meeting. And I've been here and lived here for a long time, since the beginning and through the years. And have, went to numerous township board meetings, spoke with people at Target Trucking and the people at the gravel pit. And I have to tell you, my biggest concern is safety. We have neighbors, one with multiple myeloma. And the physician is indicating is from diesel fuel. We have neighbors that have, have asthma, congestive heart failure, many different breathing problems. But the biggest thing for me, I wanted to let you know is through the years, they have done things that aren't illegal. And most hurtful to me was taking pictures on the road and being followed by a man in one of the gravel trucks. I went faster. He turned around and went back. I went back and he got out of the truck and came towards me for taking pictures. The second thing is I was retaliated against because I had genuine concerns. I'm a nurse with a master's degree. And I really feel that there are safety hazards there. The farmer who owns the property contacted the township office. My husband had passed away and I had a little farmhouse on the corner of Bone and Comball. He contacted the township supervisor and they sent someone out to inspect my house and condemned it, which caused many problems. They also met with my realtor and I wasn't there. There's also a lady that lives on Bone Road. Her name is Debbie Essex. Debbie has had a lot of problems, a lot of tragedy in her life. And she let someone use a drone to take some pictures on her property. She was also retaliated against. She had an old car that didn't run but was covered with lots of trees. You couldn't even see it from the road. And the farmer called the police and reported the car. Well, what happened with that? She doesn't have a lot of money financially. I had to try and help her get the car towed out because it was gonna cost her fifty dollars a day. So.
You have one, one minute left, Star.
Thank you. I, I just want you to know that when it began also, there were fifteen letters sent out by the township. Eleven of the properties were zensis. They were only sent out from properties that were three hundred feet from the proposed gravel pit site. Also during that time, there was a time period when the S U P was to be uh approved that no letters were sent out because the township manager felt that nobody cared. So there's been a lot of things through the years and it's still going on. Working on holidays, working over hours. The road was closed down for six months because of all the traffic and the gravel broke my daughter's wind chill when they went by driving so fast.
And you're, you're at time for her, so, so please wrap your comments up.
Well, thank you so much. I just wanted to let you know what kind of company that you're dealing with. You really please need to look at it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Star.
Thank you.
All right, next up is uh Michael Wilsinski. And then after Michael is Steve uh Searja. So Michael, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. Um, you can unmute yourself on your end and begin when you're ready.
Okay, uh, I'm Mike Bulczynski with Pangy Environmental LLC. I'm a certified professional geologist. Um, and the biggest issue I have with the model does not accurately predict what will occur during the mining. Uh, the model doesn't account for the thousands of gallons of water that's used as carriage water to transport aggregate from the mine area to the processing area. I sent in an air photo over the weekend to everybody that could look at that explains how this mine operates. It is not a closed loop system. It is not a closed-loop system. The water is discharged as settling pond that appears to be downgrading in the main mining area. This also creates a lake that appears to be over five acres when the mine is operating. We supplied photos taken from a helicopter of this lake in the past to Eagle. And it's, it, it does exceed five acres when the mine operates. So it, 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 to me, it's an illegal lake. Um, the above water is not, it's, is not discharged. It's a closed-loop system, as I said. So we believe a part three twenty-seven evaluation should, should be required. I've seen as much as six thousand gallons per minute being used as carriage water during mining. Uh, the production well at the mine extends below the base of fresh water, according to GeoWeb Face. Uh, the report mentions it's the Saginaw Formation is the bedrock where needs to site. That's not true. Uh, it's the Michigan, uh, followed by the aquifer would be the Marshall and the cold water shale. Brian and associated contaminants may have been discharged to the lake and groundwater around the mine for years. We were told that people have complained about fall tasting water. Cold water shale is known to produce brackish water high in arsenic. Mineral well brine was used for dust control and most likely infiltrated to the water table. A sample of this brine contains three hundred and seventy parts per billion benzene, when the drinking water criterion is five parts per billion. Then we have the high concentration of sodium in the brine and chloride, which can impact crops. No pesting, testing has ever been done. I believe that some of the brine application was conducted by an unlicensed contractor. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is still in the process of evaluating the apparent illness cluster around the mine. The wetlands are not all accounted for. I've also sent in a map that shows the wetlands to the southwest that are, uh, there's, there's open water there. They were originally wetlands and they're not accounted for in the delineation. I've developed mines and managed mining operations in my career. I've worked as a geologist for about forty-five years throughout the US, Canada, and Colombia, South America. Um, last year I testified uh, against Eagle Water Resource Division at administrative law hearing as an expert witness. I also retired from the DEQ, so I tried to understand all sides. Um, there are issues with, with this model. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. I've also submitted written comments and I appreciate everyone for being here. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Michael. All right, next up is Steve, uh, Searja. And then after Steve will be Bobby Harper.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, you can begin when you're ready, Steve.
My name is Steve Searja. I live at one three eight two five Sager Road. I've been here for over forty-plus years. Uh, this mine stuff has been going on for twenty-plus years. I mean, the planning commission does not do anything for the residents here. I'm hoping Eagle will do something for us and stop this. We don't need a thirty-five acre lake. We live, we have Grass Lake. Across I ninety-four is, uh, is a state park uh, with huge lake. There's, there's a zillion other lakes around here. And my wife has asthma, you know, I mean, this bothers, bothers her. Uh, I don't trust Target Trucking, Target Trucking LLC, Limited Liability Company. Between, you know, he's, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I, he's not a person to trust. And it's just like, uh, the Grass Lake Planning Commission is, is not trustworthy too. Everything that's been done has been done for Target Trucking. And you need to do something for us and stop this. You know, it, it's just, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, enough is enough. You know, would, would any one of you want this in your backyard? And I know what you're gonna say, no. So why do we have to put up with it? And I guess that's about it, cuz I, probably what's gonna happen is you're gonna let them do this lake and it's gonna just make things even worse. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Steve. All right, next up is Bobby Harper, and then after Bobby is Ellen Price. So Bobby, it looks like you're unmuted and can begin when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Bobby Harper. I live in Grass Lake, Michigan. Um, I have to agree with Steve and Mike Wazinski. Um, Target Trucking is not a good neighbor. Um, Jeff Burrell, um, falsely testified at the August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting. He falsely testified that his lake was under five acres when it actually was nine point nine acres. Um, we had the comment by Jerry Sosnowski at the September Planning Commission meeting of this year. He said that the lake was created by accident. Now, if it was created by accident, why didn't he, why wasn't it reported to Eagle? Why wasn't it reported to the township? Why didn't Target Trucking report their part three oh one violation, um, to the township? You know who reported their part three oh one violation to the township? It was the residents, and it was the residents that reported the illegal lake. So Target is not following the rules. I'm very, very concerned about the wetland delineation, um, created by Jerry Sosnowski. He has made some very confusing, very misleading, and what I consider to be false statements. He stated that the excavation on the, uh, east side of the property, um, we stated that they had cut into the groundwater, and I provided you photographs, air photographs of this water coming through, um, through, the groundwater coming through. Uh, Jerry Sosnowski made the startling comment in September at the Planning Commission meeting that it was snow melt. And, um, anyone looking at that photo can see that a wetland nearby is completely dried up. All around that whole area is dried up, so I consider that statement to be absolutely false. He also made the statement that three officials from Eagle came and inspected the property in June and basically told him that they were shooing to get their lake permit and that the hydrogeology study was a, a model for all hydro- hydrogeology studies. And it was presented at the Kalamazoo, um, conference for Eagle. I find this very disturbing because it is an after fact hydrogeology study. Um, I don't, um, understand why you don't address the second lake. It is over five acres during mining. You have to look at the whole process of the mining, not just the before or after. You've got to look at what's happening during the mining. Um, also, the amount of benz, uh, bitex that's being used at the, um, at the pit. Um, it's a very high level. Um, it's, uh, three seventy P P B. Benzene is a known carcinogen which has links to cu- uh, to cancer. And, um,
You've got a minute left, Bobby.
Um, okay, so the brine can bring hydrocarbon down into the aquifer and the residents would be drinking and bathing in this aquifer. I also agree with, uh, uh, Mike Wazinski that this is not a closed loop system and the, um, the amount of water is not accounted for in the water budget calculations. I think the hydrogeology study is flawed and I don't trust a hydrogeology study because members of this organization have falsely testified for many, many years and they should not be trusted by anyone. Thank you for hearing us today. I hope you will listen to all sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. All right, so next up is Ellen Price. And then after Ellen is Ruth McDaniel's, uh, and then we're gonna go to the raised hands, uh, after that. So Ellen, looks like you're unmuted and can begin your comment when you're ready.
Yes, thank you for the time. I'm just gonna basically just tell you my story about, about how we started. Um, we bought, um, five acres from Mr. Zenz in nineteen ninety-nine and with the assurance that it was going to stay agricultural. And when this whole mining thing started, it was supposed to be a sand mine. And I've got pictures, I mean, so many pictures I've sent into the township, you know, of these big trucks and dust. And I mean, we can throw a stone and it, we're a stone throw away from the, from the gravel pit. You can see the lake in the picture, in the overhead picture, and you can see our house. And basically, um, the dust and the noise, we can't even open our windows. I mean, it's just, it's, it's shut our, um, we live in a log home and we just had to re-stain it again. Cost thousands of dollars, and two weeks later, there's all this dust on it. But we can hear the, the grinding of the gravel. We can hear the, 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 all the trucks and their gates shut and, I mean, all day long. I mean, I've got videos that I open my windows. I've got lots and lots of videos of the noise that we have to deal with, you know, all day long. And, um, I guess, you know, the noise and the dust is a big thing. Uh, the berm and the pine trees, they were supposed to put some pine trees up. They never did. To, to, uh, with the noise and the dust that was supposed to prevent it. Um, we have wetlands that run through our property. And I think that they are in jeopardy of being destroyed and, you know, they need to be protected. That's what you guys have been talking about, you know? So, um, what else? The value of our home. Um, we've, we've tried to sell our home and nobody want, I mean, nobody would want a, a home backed up to a gravel pit. Um, and destroying our roads. I mean, I pass those big trucks all the time when I leave my house. And, um, I guess near and dear to my heart, my heart, um, after living in our house for twenty-three years, we built in two thousand. Um, after twenty-three years, um, is that I was diagnosed with multiple myeloma. Um, it's a blood cancer and, you know, um, Star had talked about it, I think that's what me, that she was talking about. But, uh, my doctor did at the U of M said that it's tied to the diesel fumes um, from these big trucks. And I've been dealing with it for fifteen, almost twenty years, you know, in my backyard. And, you know, we, we feel like we should have a voice. And we feel like, you know, all the neighbors, I mean, they're, they're suffering from asthma and all kinds of health issues. You know, carcinogenics, you know, that, that people, you don't know, but I believe that I, I just had to start chemo back again, a stronger chemo because it's a, it's roaring its ugly head again. So anyway, I just, uh, want you to know that, um, I feel like that we should have a voice and that we should, you know, not just one person making the decision, but all the people that surround this, this big, the nine point nine lake. When I look at the, the aerial shot of that lake, you know, I see-
You've got about a minute, minute left.
Okay, thank you. I see PVC pipe, you know, in, in that lake. I see, it looks like a boat when I pull it up, but I don't know. But I, you know, I mean, how can that just lake just appear? You know, how does, how does something like that just appear? Anyway, I'm just, uh, I'm really adamant to, to, uh, you know, go for the side of, of the, the residents of Grass Lake and listen to us. I, I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Um, next up is Ruth McDaniel's, and then after Ruth, uh, anybody who has not made a comment uh, is welcome to do so by, uh, raising your hand in Zoom. So with that, Ruth, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready. Are you there, Ruth? All right, if you'd like to make a comment, you just have to unmute yourself using the microphone icon at the bottom of your screen. Um, so we'll give you a second here, and then if, uh, you may need to go into your settings and select your microphone settings. But we'll give you, we'll, we'll move on here, and then we'll come back to you, Ruth. So check your settings and we'll see if we can get you to unmute yourself. All right, so with that, uh, is there anybody who has not made a statement or a comment yet who would like to? There should be a raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen. You just select that to raise your hand in Zoom, and then we'll call on you in the order of the raised hands. Um, if there's anybody on the phone, looks like there are a couple people calling in. Um, and you'd like to make a comment, uh, just select pound two on your receiver. And that will raise your hand in Zoom and we'll call on you using your phone, last four digits to your phone number. Um, so with that, is there anybody else? I don't see any other raised hands at this point. Um, we'll give it a couple more seconds here. And then Ruth, you're still unmuted if you're able to, if you wanna make a comment and are able to unmute yourself. And I should also mention that, um, if you didn't get a chance to make a comment tonight or have anything to add, we'll th- throw up on the screen the other ways to make a comment. Through My Enviro or by mail, in case you have additional questions, and we'll also be providing Maddie's contact information if you have additional questions. So with that, looks like Ruth still isn't able to get herself unmuted. And I'm not seeing any other raised hands. So Maddie, we are going to, um, invite you to read the closing statement and wrap up this part of the hearing.
All right. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time-
Hello?
Looks like Ruth figured it out. Let's take, take a pause and let, uh, Ruth make-
Hello?
Yep, are you there, Ruth?
Ryan, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now. All right, I'm glad you got that figured out. You're welcome to begin when you're ready.
Hello, I can't hear anybody.
We, all right.
Unmute. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, are you there, Ruth?
What can I hear them?
Yes, you are there.
Okay, I can't hear you guys, so I am truly sorry, not tech with it. So I live, um, on the northeast corner of the gravel pit. Um, my four acres runs adjacent to it. Um, we have been dealing with this pit, like everyone has said, since two thousand and twenty. Um, I had my daughter in two thousand and six. And within a year, she was diagnosed with asthma. And if you can imagine sitting on the bathroom floor with your daughter in the middle of the night having breathing treatments because Target Trucking was crushing concrete, which created silica dust. We are living with this now for the rest of our lives. I have asthma. She has asthma. She just finished another bout of steroids. We all know what steroids do. They're not good for children. Target has not been honest with the residents who have been good neighbors to them. We've let them do what they needed to do, and they have not been honest with our township officials. As previously mentioned, we are the ones that have to bring it to everybody's attention that they're not doing things appropriately. Yep, I have, uh, well, I had a beautiful house, but again, nobody really wants to buy a house that lives next to a gravel pit. My daughter is gonna graduate this year. Can't have a graduation party at my house. I can't really subject my family, which I have not had out to my house since this all began because I don't want them to get sick. I don't want them to breathe in the dust that we're breathing in or listen to the constant noise going on in the gravel pit. The berms don't keep the noise away. In the beginning, Target was running their excavators twenty-four hours a day, unattended. We have video of that. They just left for the day and left their trucks all running. Now, yep, I do understand you wanna leave your diesel trucks running, but you don't wanna run them twenty-four hours a day un, unattended. You know what? The five acre lake turned into a nine acre lake. Oops, our error, but they didn't tell anybody. Again, they're just not being honest. I know, I know you guys can't do my thing with regards to our, um, local, um, uh, government. And, um, Ryan, hold up your fingers for when I get to close to four minutes, cuz I can't hear you. Um, but I, and I know that's our issue we have to fix that. But you guys can do something about this. You know, it's, it's really disheartening when I have, you know, my daughter can't breathe. And, you know, I'm making appointments for the pediatrician for another dose of steroid. She's on two inhalers. I said thankfully, and I feel for Mrs. Price. Yep, we have cancer in the area. We have, you know, every- We have, you know, everybody is sick and, you know what? Target never said, you know, they were doing everything under the, under the surface. So that no one would know that they were doing things, um, in the wrong. And it's just. You guys have the. Control to do something. This lake doesn't need to go thirty-five acres. There's not enough property here. To make a thirty-five acre lake without it touching somebody's wetlands. I have wetlands on my property. My well is probably the closest to the gravel pit. And yep, I'm concerned. I'm concerned with the water we drink, what we bathe, what we cook. I said. You know, this is just, it's getting old. It's getting old that nobody wants to listen to us. And again, I know you have no control over my, thank you. Thanks for having us talk today.
Yeah, sorry, can't hear us. Thanks for your comment, Ruth.
Hmm, are you listening to?
All right. All right, uh, we'll give another chance in case any, any final comments, uh, for us tonight before we close out. Uh, and move on to the next part of the hearing. Uh, again, just need to raise your hand in Zoom using the icon at the bottom of your screen, the raised hand icon or selecting pound two. If you're on the phone and I'm still not seeing any other raised hands, so let's. Oh. And it looks like Bobby. All right, I'm going to unmute you, Bobby. Uh, it's one, just so you know, it's one comment per person. Are, are you there, Bobby? Is there anybody else on the line that would like to make a comment? Are you there?
I, I would like to make one more comment.
Bobby, we, we can't take any more comments verbally from you because you already made your comment.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
Yeah, in order to make it fair, we have to leave it at one comment per person with the same amount of time given. So if you have additional comments, you're more than welcome to, uh, provide them in writing or through MindViro, which we'll share here shortly. So thank you. All right. All right, so with that, not seeing any other raised hands. Um, let's start, try this again. Maddie, would you like to read the closing statement for us, please?
Yep. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind, remind those that may still want to submit a comment. Comments can be submitted via MindViro portal, email, or US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Maddie, and, uh, to all of you for those reading or for those, uh, comments and for great questions. Um, yeah, the other ways to submit a comment are up here. Uh, as Maddie had mentioned, through MindViro, eight, at submission number H P E W four T B B R three, seven, four. It looks like we have that back in the chat. Uh, or by mail to Maddie Orler, Eagle Water Resources Division, Jackson District Office, three zero one East Lewis Glick Highway, Jackson, Michigan. Four nine two zero one. And as Maddie had mentioned, uh, the open, the comment period will be open for ten days, which will be October twenty-sixth. All right, um, and then if there are any additional questions, um, you can contact Maddie, Maddie Orler at, uh, five one seven. Two nine zero five five seven five. And again, that's five one seven two nine zero five five seven five. By phone or by email at O R L E R M at michigan.gov and that's Michigan spelled out. O R L E R M at M I C H I G A N dot gov. All right, and with that, any closing comments, uh, for us, Jeff?
Thanks, Ryan. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for, uh, coming to this hearing and, um. Providing some good questions and comments to us. Um, I think this is a really valuable part of our process and, um. It. It is something that we do value a lot to hear from folks, um, especially that might be affected by these types of projects. Um, I, I really encourage you all to, um. You know, leave an actual written comment as well through those sources that Ryan went over earlier. Um, we will definitely be taking these. Into account, um, as we review the project and try to make a permit decision. Um. So please, you know, take advantage of this and, and give us those comments. Um, we, we do really value those. Um, and we appreciate you coming tonight to give us, uh, your comments in, uh, in person or over Zoom, I guess. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for those, uh, closing words, Jeff. Uh, thanks for everyone who participated in this. The last thing that I have is just a reminder that this hearing was recorded, uh, and a closed caption recording. Uh, will be on our YouTube channel, Eagles YouTube channel here in the next few days. So with that, I hope you all have a great rest of your evening and thank you very much for participating.